Welcome to the Wednesday, March 8th, 2017, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission during a winter that doesn't seem to want to end. We'll start with the second item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from February 22nd. Does anybody have any additions, corrections, deletions, et cetera, from those minutes? Have you had a chance to review them?
I move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
On favor?
I.
Close. Motion carries. Okay, minutes approved. Is there any correspondence from staff? Mike?
Nothing from staff, no.
Okay. We don't have Joel here yet. He may be delayed by the weather for the Transportation Commission meeting report. I did happen to note that the meeting tomorrow is canceled, so they won't be meeting, but I don't, if he comes in, we'll defer that till later on in the agenda. Okay, so we've arrived at the point in the meeting for, it's an opportunity for folks who would like to come to speak to the commission about matters that are not before us currently or pending before planning and zoning to talk to us during an open-mic period of 15 minutes. There is only one person in the audience, and she is here for another item, so I guess I'll just, if you happen to be listening, this is an opportunity for you to come downtown and, you know, on a night other than a snowy night, and talk to us about something that might be on your mind pertaining to planning and zoning. Okay, our next item is the off-street parking standards ordinance, and Mike is going to sort of update you on what our subcommittee, or committee, I guess, on parking has been working on over the last three or four months.
Sure. Yeah. So as you recall, we were working through kind of the middle of last year on taking a look at our current off-street parking standards and requirements in the zoning code. And we had the, I guess, the recommendations or the draft ordinance about where we wanted it, and decided to, we had done this similar to what we had done with the tree, the street tree ordinance, was to run it through a subcommittee of just various people, stakeholders, that are probably going to be involved in some type of process like parking lot development in the future. And so, we ended up doing that. We had about eight members on that committee. We had David Rock, he was a U of I horticulturist, Richie Beebe, a local contractor in town, Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates with civil engineering, Matt Decker's a landscape contractor that works in the area, Susan Wilson, more of a land use attorney in town as well, Victoria was filling the position of a citizen, and she's also on the Sustainable Environment Commission, and provided some good input there. And then Wendy and Greg were representing P&amp;Z on this committee as well. So, we met three times, and we just wrapped up our final meeting last Wednesday, and they had come up with some pretty good recommendations. And what I have is our draft ordinance for the parking standards, and all of our previous either staff or P&amp;Z recommendations are in red, and then all of the committee recommendations are in blue, so you can kind of track as we go through the ordinance. So, out of the, at the very beginning, there was a section on just allowing extensions or a temporary or conditional certificate of occupancy if there was parking lot requirements that weren't completed within six months. It used to be 18, we had changed that to six. And then the committee wanted to allow the option to, you know, six months seemed like a reasonable period of time in order to complete all the necessary parking lot improvements, but they did want, you know, in the event of unforeseen circumstances where they're not able to complete it within six months, they wanted the ability for staff or the zoning administrator to be able to extend that another six months. And so, that's what I've done, is inserted that in blue, just allowing the zoning administrator to extend that. We, you know, we're thinking originally of requiring them to put up a security for those improvements, similar to what we do with a lot of public improvements, as well as the recent street tree ordinance. And, you know, the more we thought about that, it kind of puts us in an odd situation, taking a security and then coming onto private property in order to complete somebody's improvement. So, we just kept it simple, just to say we allow a six-month extension, and then we just worked with the developer, the property owner at that point, to try to get it in. So, not dealing with any type of security. We have the section that allows for off-site parking, so you're required to, you know, every use provide a certain number of parking spaces. We allow those to be satisfied off-site. It was previously going through a conditional use permit. We had proposed to do that through just staff authorizing that. There were some distances associated with how far the off-site parking could be. We were left with about 100 feet specified for residential uses, other than single and two-family dwellings, so for, you know, multifamily complexes, for instance. We'd taken a look at really what 100 feet was, and it didn't get you very far. You know, we were looking at maybe the south doors, the city hall here, and it only got you to about a few parking stalls into the parking lot, so...
You couldn't even be in another block.
Yeah, I mean, the typical lot, yeah, two houses down, you know, even a small lot width is 50 feet, so decided to increase that to 250 was their recommendation there. And then joint use, other than wanting to require, you know, needing to require an accessible parking space onsite, and then some amount of, you know, smaller amount of, I guess, parking for employees of whatever that use may be. They wanted to increase the nighttime and daytime, so we allowed this joint use provision, where if you have a nighttime use, up to 50% of the parking can be satisfied by like a daytime use. And so, you know, they give example of what nighttime uses are and daytime uses. Right now, it's 50%. We had changed this particular section, instead of going through the Board of Adjustment for a conditional use permit, just to allow staff to authorize that. I guess their comments were, there really wasn't any good reason why it shouldn't be increased. You know, we had looked at a lot of other jurisdictions, and it seemed like their percentage was anywhere between 75 to 100%. And so, the only, you know, issue you may run into is needing to account for some type of overlap. So you have maybe a daytime use, they get off at five, you know, some of those people may be staying 15 minutes after to work on things, and then you may have a gym that only operates in the evening, and then maybe their clientele gets there a little bit earlier. So, wanted to account for that overlap, and that's typically why it's not all the way at 100%. That's why they usually leave it, you know, somewhere around 75 to 85%. So, they would propose to increase that to 85% for both the daytime and the nighttime And then, you know, a couple of years ago, we had done the tandem parking ordinance for multifamily, so right now, we allow a single-family and two-family dwellings. You're allowed to do tandem parking when you have those uses, but multifamily, you were previously not allowed to do any type of tandem parking. There was a, kind of a need, I guess, or a, you know, developer wanted to do parking that was in garages, you know, a little bit higher-end multifamily with garages attached to the units, and did it in a tandem configuration. So you had a single-car garage within a parking space in front of that. And we ended up looking at this ordinance and ultimately approving it, and it was just to allow that tandem configuration in multifamily. We had certain requirements. It was only intended for enclosed garages for multifamily, so you couldn't have a tandem configuration just in a parking lot. It had to be a garage associated with it. And then the tandem spaces have to be furnished by the occupants of the dwelling unit without separate additional compensation, so the, you know, the owner of the apartment complex wouldn't be able to rent those out as storage units, and then allow somebody to park in front of them. And then it used to be that the garage space would only be counted as a quarter of the parking space towards satisfying the number of required off-street parking spaces for the use. And the concern there was that if you have the garages with the space in front of that, that people may fill the garage with stuff, you know, not park in there, and then park in front of the garage.
People never do.
No. I'm just thinking of my own garage at that point. And then, so you have maybe the, you know, a car, a parking space right in front of the garage that the tenant is using, and there may be an issue with visitor/guest parking. So, that was our primary concern with this, is that if it's in that configuration with one in the garage, one in front of it, and they don't park, you know, it's blocked, or they don't park in there, then there won't be enough guest or visitor parking, and it would overflow out on the street, maybe cause an issue there. And so that's why we took a rather conservative approach with the one-quarter number. They wanted to see a increase in what would we count that as. So, they wanted to see that counted fully. What we had done was, thought about that a little bit and compared, this was one of the developments that had done the tandem parking, so there's six garage, single-car garages in here, and then you have the space in front of each garage. And so what you end up with is quite a bit of parking. I think we ended up with over 100 parking spaces for a development that wasn't that, you know, wasn't that big. So, after taking a look at that, in order to ensure that we'd have some type of visitor parking, we just came up with no more than 50% of the required parking may be provided in a tandem configuration. So, that gives an option of counting those garage spaces fully, so they'll count as a parking, off-street parking space, so they'll satisfy that, but they're just going to be limited to 50% of that development. And when we looked at this, they ended up coming in at about, I think, 58% of what would be guest, or, you know, guest or visitor parking in an untandem configuration. And so, you know, they would meet that requirement, and we thought that that would be more of a, you know, compromise, counting more of the spaces in the garage, but still just ensuring that there was going to be some amount of guest and visitor parking. So, that was their recommendation there. And parking stall dimensions, we had talked about, right now, compact spaces are seven and a half feet in width, 15 feet in length, and this was kind of a compromise, you know, seven and a half feet wide is not very wide. It's hard enough to fit your car in a nine-foot wide space and be able to get out and not bang the doors, and so, you know, that, but the length is typically not been a problem with the 15 feet, even though it is a little short. So, they wanted to increase the percentage of allowed compact parking spaces from 25% right now to 35%, and we compromised by increasing the width from seven and a half to eight on that. And so that was their recommendation. And I know the commission, we had talked about, you know, providing an incentive for bicycle parking, but we hadn't inserted it yet. The committee was all for, you know, incentives in order to reduce some of the automobile parking, and so, we had taken, a portion of our bicycle parking ordinance, you may recall, I think it was around 2010, we had taken an ordinance that would require bicycle parking for all commercial multifamily and institutional development, and it ended up not being passed by council. So we had taken a portion of that ordinance and made it an incentive. So the only portion of the ordinance that we had really taken was just ensuring the bicycle rack spacing, that a portion be sheltered, that it be located close to a front entrance of the development, and it be well-lit, so if you're in a multifamily development, that you're not going to be worried that it's going to get stolen in a dark corner around the side of the building. And so, what this would allow would be a reduction in 10% of the automobile parking spaces if bicycle parking is provided as part of the development, and then they would have to meet these requirements. The number of required bicycle spaces, you may recall, we have the automobile table which lists all the required parking by use. Within the bicycle parking ordinance, we had done number of bicycle parking spaces per use too, so we just pretty much added a column onto the end of that for required bicycle parking. We didn't want to make that, this, that complicated, so we just thought we would go with a total calculation, so the total number of bicycle parking spaces must equal four times the total number of reduced automobile parking spaces. So, if you're looking at, you know, maybe you've got a 40-stall parking lot, you want to do the 10% incentive, you're able to reduce the number of automobile spaces by four, well, you just go four times four, so it'd be 16 spaces that you'd be required to provide in a sheltered configuration for the bicycle parking. So, they were...
That's not the way I read that, but that makes sense now.
Yeah.
I thought it was the whole parking lot. I said, "That's a lot of spaces for bicycles."
No, just the number that are reduced. So, you know, usually it's going to be, uh, depends on how big the project is, but, you know, typical 40, 50-stall parking lot, you're looking at four or five spaces. Each rack has two spaces, so it'll have one on one side, one on the other. So, you know, 16, it'd be eight bike racks, U-shaped bike racks, in lieu of the four automobile parking spaces in that, in that situation. So, they were, they were happy with that. And then we got to the landscaping requirements section. We just wanted to add, you know, we had gone back through, a lot of this previously had to do with aesthetics, and we went in and looked at all the benefits that parking within landscape, or landscaping within parking lots benefited. And, so we'd gone through all those, and then they still wanted to add native plantings and zere-scaping are encouraged for water savings, reduced maintenance, reduction in fertilizers and pesticides, increased pollination, and reduction in yard waste. So not requiring it, just, you know, encouraging kind of those best practices for water conservation in town. And then we have the placement of landscaping in off-street parking lots, so this is our, we broke it down into two sections. We had the exterior landscaping, and we had the interior landscaping. The exterior landscaping, everything looked fine to them. They did want to specify gallon sizes, because that's the way you typically order things. So, when you're developing your plans, and you have the number of plantings that are required, anytime you're ordering that from the nursery, it always comes in either one-gallon, two-gallon, three-gallon size, depending upon if it's shrubs or trees, and so, they just wanted to specify, I think previously we had two feet in height upon planting, and it was, you know, you don't get a lot of things that are two feet in height upon planting for shrubs. And so, this is a lot better of a gauge of how big the plant is, and to ensure more of an equitable treatment of everybody, instead of, you know, maybe they got a twig that's two feet, and the rest of it's, you know, a foot, foot and a half. So, this was going to be a lot more consistent with dealing with the number of plantings and the size of them. So, they recommended that at least one gallon for perennial, at least two gallons in size for deciduous or evergreen. And then the interior landscaping, these are the parking lot islands. I would note that, so they, they added the similar language about the gallon in size for perennial, and two gallons for deciduous and evergreen. They did want to have a statement at the very end, so, there was some current, you know, David Rock had come to the commission and talked about the conflicts they have on campus with lighting and trees, and maybe vehicular site obstructions, the wrong type of tree or shrub causes in their parking lots. And they wanted to add the ability, you know, we, I think we always have some type of flexibility, but they wanted to state the ability of the zoning administrator to authorize relocating of a parking lot tree to another landscape area if that tree is deemed to interfere with parking lot lighting or vehicular site distances. So, you know, if they have a light that needs to be in a certain location, and they can't physically fit the number of trees in there, and, you know, like Matt at the committee stated multiple times, that, you know, they're usually the last ones that go in. So all of a sudden, they go out to a site, and there may be things that are on the ground that they didn't show on the plans, like a Vista's got a utility box and a location, and they can't put a shrub or a tree there. There's a light pole in a different location, you know, there's, it always seems like it has to change slightly for landscapers, and so, they wanted to have that type of flexibility there. There was quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting, in the meeting prior to that, on when the landscape islands kick in. So, we had, so right now, we have a requirement that they kick in at 50 spaces. We have a little bit different, and I'll talk about this in a minute, but they were kind of split. Half the committee, I think, wanted to leave it at 20, like Planning and Zoning had recommended previously, and then the other half wanted to leave it at 50, which is what it currently is. And so, there was quite a bit of discussion on that at the last committee meeting, and I figured that we'd go through, kind of the, back through the research, and then everything that the committee had looked at. I mean, you know, that's really the only, I guess, outstanding issue from the committee was, they couldn't reach a consensus on that, and we tried for the last half hour to come to a compromise, but I think everybody was either set on the 20 or wanted to remain at the 50. So, I'll just go, you know, briefly go back through the research that we had done. We had looked through, so right now, we have a threshold for interior landscaping, when you're required to provide islands, and it's right now 50. So, 50 to 99 spaces, you got two islands, 100 to 199 spaces, three islands, 200 or more parking spaces, you're required to have four islands. And it's always been that, you know, in staff's interpretation of the code, and what's on ground a lot of the times, is this three-foot is the width of these, and it's at this, I guess, the toe of the stalls, separating them into different bays of more of a linear, you know, rectangular. This is always pretty much assuming that every parking lot's going to be symmetrical and rectangular, which, and oftentimes, they're not. So it's, it's been a challenge to implement in some circumstances where you don't have a perfectly square rectangular parking lot to divide it into bays with this three-foot buffer. Most other jurisdictions envision this type of buffer, or this type of interior landscape island, which is more of an end cap to the parking spaces. And so, you know, I think that's probably why we ended up with such a high number in the beginning, but I can't be sure. Looking back through the research that we had, for the threshold, Boise, 12 or more spaces, that's when they started to require islands. Caldwell was the same. Coeur d'Alene actually kicks in at six spaces. Lewiston, they have a square footage there. Meridian's 12 or more. Missoula's 10 or more spaces, or more than 3,300 square feet of paved area. Napa doesn't specify, I think they had an overall percentage, including exterior and interior. Pullman starts at 20, Sandpoint's 10, and Twin Falls is 20 or more spaces. So, you know, this is the, kind of the standard configuration that we had been working on before, with more of a three-to-five-foot island, just the head of all these spaces that divided into kind of these two bays, or two areas. Walmart was developed kind of in that fashion. And we've had issues with this, mainly because it's really problematic for snow removal. You know, it's a lot easier when you have those islands at the end, and, you know, to remove snow, maintenance, access, and so we've had issues with these in the past, and you haven't seen very many of them recently. So this is Walmart, they have all these, you know, divided up into bays, the entire, entire length of it. These are the Joseph Street ballfields, this is more of a recent development, and this is, you know, we had looked at this before, and this is more of a one-per-12 scenario that we, you know, we have the frequency of one per 12, it's just that they kick in once you hit 20. So this would be similar to what the current requirements would look like out there at the Joseph Street ballfields. We'd gone through, you know, the main concern from, coming from the committee was how this would affect smaller parking lots. You know, really didn't have a, necessarily, a issue with some of the larger parking lots shifting from this long three-footer to the end islands that were eight feet. You know, you end up with a similar amount of landscaping, and it's, you know, allows a lot larger of an area for a tree to grow and some shrubs, and allows you to divide that throughout the site a lot better than just that three-foot divided into bays. And so I had some examples. We had, this is University Crossing development out there. This is, sorry, this is an old picture, but you have Fairfield Inn here, and Autozone over here. We ended up taking a look at, so this is comparing to what the current proposal would be in the ordinance. They had 30 parking spaces, so they're over 20, so it would kick in two islands, and they have four that are provided as part of this. So, they would meet what our current proposal would be. This is an infill development, apartment complex on C Street. They wouldn't kick in because they're at 15 parking spaces, and they haven't reached the 20 to kick in. Jimmy John's development here on Sixth and Jackson, they wouldn't be affected by this either, they're at 13 parking spaces there. This is out on Baker Street, apartment complex, they would be affected by this. So, you know, this is the, where it comes into an issue right now. You have 50 part, you know, right now, technically, they'd be required to divide this into bays, which I don't see any physical way you can do that, just because it's this long linear parking lot, and it's not, you know, a square shape to be able to divide it into two separate areas. And so, you end up with pretty much no internal landscape islands within this development. So they have 78 spaces. Six islands would be required as part of, as part of this proposal. They have some locations to install interior islands. They may be right at their number of parking spaces. We had, Baker Street right now is designated as a collector, so their parking would be reduced as part of this development if they were to rebuild, because we have that change within the uses. We had a higher percentage of parking required if you're adjacent, for certain multifamily, if you're adjacent to a collector or arterial, and that's just to take into consideration that there's probably not any on-street parking on a collector or arterial. But in this case, Baker Street does have parking on both sides, and so, with the proposal, we've reduced, we've taken that out of there. So, you just have a flat, if it's two-bedroom, or three, three or more bedrooms, it was .75, or one per bedroom for any multifamily dwelling containing three or more bedrooms, and providing direct vehicular access between the parking area and the designated arterial or collector. So, it's likely that a number of those parking spaces would, they'd be eliminated, they wouldn't need to provide them. They could also look at doing bicycle parking incentive, you know, so they'd be able to get seven parking spaces, automobile spaces eliminated right there if they provided bicycle parking. So, this would be one of the ones that, you know, could potentially be affected and required to put in some islands, but they do have quite a few options with those changes.
Do you have a, like, a rough estimate of how many parking lots there are that exceed that 50 spaces in town?
I don't. I mean, there's, out of all the parking lots that there are, you know, probably 40, 35, 40% exceed the 50. I mean, a lot of the...
Pretty healthy number, then.
Yeah, you know, it, we have a lot of apartment complexes, and so, there's usually large parking lots associated with those. We have, you know, Palouse Mall, and a lot, a lot of that large-scale Eastside Marketplace, a lot of that retail that has large parking lots.
Try state.
Yeah, try, all on the corridors, so, you know, you're probably, you know, it's probably upwards to 50, 60%, probably would exceed that requirement that would, you know, would kick in right now under our current, current ordinance.
One difference that I think is more than subtle is that most of the apartment complexes have kind of stringy parking going around as opposed to retail has a tendency to have a big area of parking as opposed to still...
I'm just a square.
It's hard to make a generalization about, you know, if you just think of several bay area that is so blighted and yet many of these don't seem to feel that the same way.
Yeah.
I'm not saying a number doesn't work, but it just, there's something wrong with just saying a number of, say, okay, 55 or 50 spaces, but if they're, how they're organized really makes a difference.
Well, if you're talking, I agree with you when you're talking about aesthetics because if you, you know, the new urbanists want to see buildings up front and parking either on the side or behind, so for aesthetic reasons, that makes sense. When you get into the other jobs that landscaping does for a parking lot, like providing shade and absorbing stormwater runoff, et cetera, then that doesn't apply.
Doesn't matter.
It would matter, it wouldn't matter, yeah. And if you're in that apartment building and your air conditioner window unit is going because there's so much urban heat island effect of that big parking lot reflecting heat, you might feel differently. You'd like to see a few trees. So, that's, you know, that's where I, I don't thi... I think our problem is in the past, we've just looked at landscaping as beautification, but we haven't looked at it as doing engineering work in a sense. So...
This is a, further on down Baker, right where it currently terminates. Another apartment complex, these were, I think, originally condos, they still might be, but they do have garages on the north side there. So, I just counted, you know, in terms of a parking lot, and I think we could probably clarify this for a number of parking spaces, I don't think it probably should include the spaces that are within the buildings. Because, you know, as far as the amount of pavement you're trying to mitigate, you know, it's more consistent if it's just the number of spaces on the outside.
Out of sight, out of mind, yeah.
So, looking at this development, they have a number of these islands and this is typically what happens is you have these areas where you can't fit a parking space because you've got some turning radius for fire truck access through here. And so, you end up with these areas that are typically landscaped anyway because it may be cheaper instead of paving that in order to, you know, put some landscaping in there. So, they ended up with 93 spaces as part of this. Seven islands would be required under the proposal and they've got 10 islands, so they would meet the requirement here. This was another infill development. This is on Main and Morton. They have 15 spaces required, so they wouldn't be affected by this.
Mike, on that last one, do you know why they put more than, more than the required number in? Or do you know why they put 10 in instead of... Because I think what, currently, how many would they be required to put in?
They would just be required to divide it into two bays, which is, you know, that's, again, it's hard, you know, with this kind of configuration, how you'd envision dividing it into two bays. So, I guess you'd maybe need two types of islands. I mean, there's a topography change here, so there's a retaining wall and so you come down onto this side and so it's not like, you know, say these buildings weren't there. Well, divided into two bays, you typically run a three-foot island, you know, and this area right here to divide this side with that side, well, this, you know, you can't really do that. And so, you know, I don't know what we required here. It was mainly, two would have been required per our current requirements, but, you know, they really wouldn't have been what we had envisioned with that long, you know, three footer to divide it. And so, I think that's part of the good thing that we're doing with these and, you know, interior landscaping is specifying what they are instead of the three footer at the head of the parking spaces. But I don't, yeah, I don't know. It was really up to the developer is the one to put these in there. But, yeah, you have utilities a lot of the time.
I think we had some utilities and some of those transformers.
So, yeah, this is Main and Morton. This was an infill apartment complex and they went, hit the 20, they're at 15. We have, this is just an example. J U B is taking over the Umpqua Bank Building and this is on the northwest corner of Jackson and Third. So, just taking a look at, you know, this is not retroactive, so they wouldn't be able to come, they wouldn't need to come back, but... So, they have 23 parking spaces and so one planter island would be required and they've already got a couple here, a couple here. Those would be exterior, but they have maybe half a one there, but they've got a dumpster on the other side. So, that one would meet that requirement. This is a infill, this is right behind the old Domino's Pizza Building. So, this is 95, had the old Domino's right here. Used to be a trailer park. This is Chuck Bond's Development. He had constructed a number of multifamily units back there. He would, he has 42 spaces, so if the 20 held and he was required to kick in, he would be required to provide three islands and so I think he was about at his limit for required parking spaces. He was at his minimum and so he wouldn't have a whole lot of room for islands, you know. In this circumstance, he'd either have to take a look at the bicycle parking incentive. We are, you know, proposing to reduce the percentage of, or increase the percentage of compact, so that could help him out in creating one of those. Another, you know, thought would be that, is this really one parking lot? You know, I mean, we have this in the front and then it's almost two parking lots, you know. So, I think that if this was located in the front and then we had a parking lot back here, I think you'd obviously say it'd be two parking lots. And so, you know, I think that that might be something to consider, that, you know, it's really in this odd configuration. And so, you know, we have a lot of these, like those developments on Baker that kind of wrap around, you know, odd-shaped lot and so you can't really fit a square, symmetrical parking lot in this area. But he would be, you know, per this ordinance, if he was developed from new, from scratch, he'd be required to put three islands in. But he would, you know, certainly have some options to be able to do that. But, you know, we could take a look at, you know, this wouldn't be over 20, so that wouldn't kick in. This would probably kick in here. I think they have more than 20 there, so maybe they have one island that's required and we could look at, you know, maybe allowing some flexibility in this circumstance in order to be able to, you know, work with them on that. That may be an option. This is the new diner on Third and Jackson. So, they have 17 spaces in their parking lot and they wouldn't kick in, they wouldn't be required to provide any landscape islands there since they don't hit the 20. This is a larger multifamily development. I think it's about half completed or maybe three quarters completed right now. It's out on White Avenue. This is Kestrel Development. They have 166 spaces. 13 islands would be required and they've provided 15 as part of their development. So, all of these are end islands. So, they would, they would meet the standard. This is the one we looked at a little earlier for tandem parking. So, they end up with 106 spaces and a lot of those, they have six garage spaces per building and so that's why they end up, they only have 64 outside spaces. So, if we were to take the, you know, 106, they'd end up with probably eight, nine required islands. You know, just looking at the amount of outside spaces, they'd be required to provide five and they have five or six islands that they've provided as part of that development, so they would meet that requirement.
So, what determines if something is an island or is just landscaping that happens to be next to the parking lot?
Well, we have that standard, so it's eight feet wide by 20 feet deep.
Okay.
You know, so, yeah. As long as it's not on the exterior. So, you know, we were thinking that, so say that they have, you know, an island that meets that, but it's located right here in this compact space, that wouldn't count because it's exterior to the lot, you know. We were thinking about, this was kind of the half, the six here, because, you know, it's so far in that it wouldn't really be exterior. They've got the exterior here, so I think that we could probably say that that'd be some type of interior island there. We also talked about this island here. That's undoubtedly that small because fire trucks need to come through here and make that radius. So, you know, that was something else we discussed that maybe allowing some more flexibility for staff to, you know, in these circumstances where they have to make the radius to allow maybe a slightly smaller island in order to be able to do that. So, you know, that's kind of what we talked about there. So, I, excuse me, just wanted to give you, it's sometimes hard to envision these things when you're just looking at an overhead shot. So, I had gone through and more just gotten some Google images about, you know, what slightly under 50 parking spaces would look like with no landscape island or no island requirement within those. And so, I had just, you know, this, these are about slightly under 50, 48, 49 here in this parking lot. Kind of same thing here, just looking at this internal section of that parking lot. Be a similar parking lot with 50 spaces. Kind of got some local examples. This is Latah County Courthouse. So, you have the, you know, Fifth and Van Buren. They don't, don't have any exterior landscaping, but they don't have any interior either. They're at about 48, 49 parking spaces as part of their development. I didn't count these ones that are in the carport over here.
And that isn't a particularly good example of somebody that's done a good job, do you think?
Well, I'm just showing a...
I hate to be saying anything about my county, but...
Yeah, I'm just showing you examples of kind of an equivalent of, you know, 45 to 50 parking spaces without any interior island.
I'm beginning to, I feel, and I think I've had this before, that 50 is a lot. 20 is pretty small. I could, I could imagine arguing for a 30 break myself and 20 seems not too much, but 50 is clearly, can be, can be pretty ugly. And how many did you say are in this?
There's about 48, 49. I didn't count these, I think there's ones in a carport right there. So, just got a Google Earth view of what their parking lot looks like. Across the street, they have some ancillary parking as well. This is about 40 parking spaces there. So, they have, yeah, so it'd be 40. This is a view of what that looks like.
You can also see that, in all these examples, you can see the pattern that you were talking about in those where you've got the, in the big square lots where you just have a bunch of spaces, you notice the lack of landscaping. But in the residential where you've got, you've got utility considerations, traffic flow considerations, not wanting to pave useless space considerations, they've got more than would be required under the proposed change or even the current.
And do you think, and I guess my curiosity is why? Why have they decided to do it anyway? You know, and I don't think it's because every developer wants to do the right thing. I don't, I don't really buy that argument. I think some do, you know, but not all. So, why did, do you have any idea why they decided to just go ahead and, you know, some of it is directing traffic, it appears like, that they don't want so many parking areas?
Yeah, like Scott mentioned, a lot of it, you know, some of the times, it's utility, you know, locations. You know, right now, we do have a requirement that, you know, you have to have one tree per 10 parking spaces. So, you know, in our exterior buffer, what we've said is that, you know, to get away from that, you're required to have a tree every certain number of feet. But right now, it's pretty much up to the developer where they put those trees, as long as they're located somewhere next to the parking lot. So, you think about this circumstance, well, they have 106 spaces, they're required to provide 10 trees. Where do you put those adjacent to the parking lot? They're not going to, you know, over here, there's not really a whole lot of room and so you end up with, you know, naturally, these areas are good because you can't fit anything there really because you've got two intersecting parking spaces. So, that's just a natural area that, you know, it automatically creates an island and so that would be an island. So, they end up, you know, and same here, you know, there's, you can't put a, there's a little bit of a grade change, you can't put a space there, so they end up just leaving that as landscaping.
So, it's really to fulfill the tree requirement that they're doing?
Well, I'd say that that's partly driving it, is the tree requirement, then, but then you also have these areas. I mean, you've got the same thing going on here with you've got this hammerhead configuration for a fire truck. You know, you can't have a space sticking out into that, so what do you do? You end up, you know, doing a landscape area because it's probably cheaper to put dirt on, you know, keep dirt on the ground than it is to pave over that. And it looks better. So, it's, you know, it's a plus, win-win for the developer. So, I'd imagine that that, you know, it's partly the tree requirement driving that. I think it's partly that you have these unusable areas where you can't have parking and then I think, you know, the other part is the developer wants to have a good-looking project, you know.
And that's good, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we're approaching this from the wrong angle, instead of thinking in terms of number of spaces, maybe we ought to look at it in terms of parking lot configuration. Just where you've got the big lots where you've got head-to-head parking, where you notice the absence of landscaping. Around here, where the parking is all facing a sidewalk or a building, there's all sorts of other factors that encourage the landscaping. In other words, this, it doesn't look to me like this is the kind of thing that presents the problem that we're trying to address by number of spaces. It's the, it's the county courthouse lot. It's the Rose Hours Lot where you've got just lots of area and nothing really to break it up like you have in a residential project.
It's amazing, just thinking about history. It took quite a few years before towns in the West started planting trees. It wasn't a natural thing and if you look back, if we look back at 1910, 1915, 1920, it's just shocking, the whole, you can look all across the city and then all of a sudden, somehow, I think, I don't know whether it was after the war or what, we've all of a sudden become exceedingly green and the fact that I trust that we, I think Moscow's done a better job than many in terms of being a tree city. It feels green and now you can't. I'm guessing from my house that the, well, the guy, Cornpole that built it, he could probably look all the way from the top of his house right downtown and just look all the way and now there isn't a chance, you can't see a block. So, we do have a different attitude, but like Wendy said, the number of trees has something to do with CO2 and those kinds of things more than just beauty.
Well, I'm thinking of stormwater, you know, when we get, when we get our 55 degree after tonight and a few other days of snow and then we get our 55-degree temperatures, everything melts and water hits the streets and you have that. I look at those huge paved areas that are going to be just jump, overloading and really putting a press on our stormwater system and I just read the stormwater report and we have some problems here and there in our, in our citywide system. So, it's, you know, it does a lot of, lot of jobs, I guess, yeah, and one of them is CO2 filtration, but also just shade and site water retention, you know. Some cities have gone to 100% site water retention on site, you know. Seattle has, you can't build anything now without, you know, getting the, keeping the water on site. So, it's, I mean, I think Seattle has, I'm pretty sure they were moving that way anyway, by a certain date anyway. So, I think it's an issue in the... So, I think it's an issue in the future, too, that's tied up with, with some of these other issues, that when you have huge areas of unmitigated pavement-
Well, we have the EPA stormwater permit, you know, the phase-two permit, and I think they're right now just, you know, working through that. And so, that's why we've kind of held off on a stormwater section of this with swales and things like that, is because we don't know what that's gonna say and what we're gonna be required to do as part of that. So, you know, we're, I think we're gonna hold off, and then at some point in the future, you know, whatever the requirement's gonna be, we can come back and take a look at what we have to do.
But it's sort of changing the mentality that you can't maximize a site anymore with pavement. I mean, you know, there's, there's just other circumstances that keep that from being a good idea.
Yeah, and I mean, I understand both what Nels and Gregor are saying about, you know, the, the really nasty parking lot, if I can use that term, is just the big square block with a hundred parking spots in it. But the one, like, like the parking spot that you had last up on the, or the parking lot you had last up on the plans, I mean, I could see there being a pretty good case again about, is this actually one parking lot? I mean, it goes with one development, you know, it's true. So, so I'm wondering if it might be worth thinking about.
Well, it's multiple bays, it's like one doubles, two, one street and two sets of-
But what I was wondering is if you want, if you want to try to build some flexibility in for certain circumstances, that, that maybe that might be the route about, you know, can, does somebody get to define that by not having it totally masked, that you could kind of call it, well, this is sort of two parking lots, and we can give you some wiggle room on, on how you configure the thing.
Yeah.
I don't know. Mike, do you know of any locality that configures their amount of spaces and islands based upon their parking lot design and, like, their configuration? Is that present in any?
I'm not sure I know what you mean.
So, what I'm meaning, because what Greg has been saying, it's not necessarily as much as a issue with the islands as it is with how the parking lot is configured.
So, on the side or the rear of the development?
Yeah, so should there be different requirements for different parking lot designs and configurations?
I don't know that they, you know, obviously, there's a lot of places that regulate, you know, want more of an urban environment, so they'll require the parking on the side or at the rear, and they won't allow the, you know, Walmart configuration where they have this giant parking lot in front of it. They, you know, more of an urban environment. I don't know that I've seen any that change depending upon the configuration, just because of how hard, you know, that, that would be to, I guess, come up with and then to, you know, enforce. So you think about the symmetrical square parking lot and, you know, having requirements for that and then come, you know, trying to come, that'd be the challenge, is trying to come up with different requirements depending upon-
Right, going back to that one you had with the apartment building where it's kind of an L shape, where you have one bay here and one that way. What criteria would enable you to separate those two lots so that they're considered two lots instead of one, I think is maybe one of the questions. And it's such a, you know, every site is different, and so how many circumstances can you really define? Is there an umbrella that we could come up with? I don't, I don't know. I mean, you know, it's an interesting thought, but I could see how that one, you know, you could, where, where there's that compression area where the driveway goes through, you could somehow, you know, with a certain amount of landscaping there, define them as two separate lots, even though it's on the same development parcel.
Yeah, I mean, we could think about taking a stab at some language that would allow, you know, zoning administrator to make an interpretation of that decision that there's, you know, and maybe it's something along the lines of when there's, you know, two parking areas divided by a single drive aisle, you know, that's greater than-
X amount of, apart-
Yeah, certain amount of length type of thing, or, you know, certain distance away from each other, that we could count it as two parking lots.
Yeah.
And take a look at some examples and do that. I mean, seems like we've got quite a bit of flexibility built into some other things here, so, you know, we could certainly take a look at maybe trying it there as well.
Victoria, did you want to, Victoria was on the committee, and I completely spaced out inviting you up to the table, if you'd like to join, Edom. The discussion's in progress, prior to the meeting.
You see any, did you see any problems? I was trying to get, I'm thinking to ask Mike, so what are the sticking points do you think we need to deal with that, that twenty to fifty area is the one thing that-
It's very, you know, I think everybody either agreed or could, you know, came up with some pretty good recommendations, and everybody pretty much agreed on all the recommendations. It was just the, you know, when the islands kick in, and it was pretty much split fifty-fifty. I think maybe one person on the fifty side could, could have compromised and gone down to thirty, forty, I think is what he was saying.
I, I could have gone to thirty. After the meeting, I sat in the mayor's conference room and looked out at our, our lot right here, which, which, not including all the stuff to the, to the north, but just the southernmost paralleling third street, and counted the cars. And it's a thirty-car parking lot with, and if you extended that to fifty, it would go across the street and up to the next lot. It would be a big swath without internal landscaping. And I think one of the problems is, you can look at stuff on paper, but when you look at it three dimensionally, it's, it tells you so much more. And, so to me, thirty seemed okay, fifty seemed really excessive. That was kind of what I walked away feeling at the end of it, you know? Like, I'm willing to compromise, but not all the way to fifty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we could look at going to third, bumping that up to thirty, and then trying to include some type of flexibility about determining of when there are two different parking lots. You know, I think that if we did that, like, in this circumstance, this would probably be less than thirty. This obviously is, and so, you know, you wouldn't look at, I mean, you have a few different issues going on here, because you've got a commercial zone here, so they were required to put a type-B buffer, which is shrubs and trees. And so this entire side is a giant landscape buffer. So, I think that satisfies a lot of what we're looking for with, you know, islands in the parking lot. So, I don't, you know, this is kind of one of the examples where they would be required to go back in and put some of those islands if they were to develop under what we're looking at now. And the amount of landscaping around there that currently exists, because they, they do have a lot of old growth trees over here, too, maybe it wouldn't make a, you know, whole lot of sense to require islands as part of this, just because they have so much landscaping anyway. So, yeah, we could, you know, I think that that's reasonable. I mean, it's separated by a, you know, a smaller travel aisle here, and they're running two separate directions, so I think we could pretty easily say that that's two parking lots. So, we could look at some language and then bring that back, you know, next time.
I just counted twenty-nine spots.
Twenty-nine, so they'd be good, yeah.
In the north?
Yeah.
So, I'll try and mend with a, which is kind of reiterating some of the things, anyway, but if you go back and look at what the other cities were, they were doing twelve, so clearly fifty was way off the mark. You're still talking about an area of asphalt that you have to deal with, and you are not talking just aesthetics, you're talking all the other urban, urban factors that are involved there, regardless of the configuration. You still have that to deal with. I would add, I would go to thirty, but I sure wouldn't go any higher, you know? But, and there's a lot of latitude built in here, and as long as you have that flexibility in there, you can work with it.
So if you look at that one, it's, I think it's eighteen on each side, so that's thirty-six on the north parking lot there, or, so, you know, that's given you a sense of how many cars you'd have if you went over thirty, and without any real buffer.
Let's see, I like that one. That's, that's the most that I would go with, thirty-five, thirty-six.
And this is, you know, I think the last example I had. This is the old EMSI building in Alturas Technology Park, so they've got about the seventeen, maybe thirty-four?
Sixteen, thirteen.
Thirty-four there, and, and-
That's what I would do.
Yeah, that, I mean, that size, it feels like it's right at the limit of-
Feels right at the top, yeah.
-of how big you would want it to possibly be. I mean, I mean, I think I'm, I'm willing to err a little bit on the side of trees, and I think thirty's a pretty good number.
Because you still have incentives that you can work with, so.
Sorry.
Yes, you still have the incentives that you can work with.
Oh, yeah.
So, so, yeah.
Okay, so, sounds like what I'm hearing is thirty with some flexibility about how we decide what a, you know, contiguous parking lot is or is not.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, we're responding to the committee that wanted to keep it at fif, or it was split. It was, I would say we agreed to disagree is what, the way we want to live in that circumstance, and so it was kind of just trying to respond, but not going maybe all the way. It's called compromise. Yeah.
Thirty's reasonable. And over time, if people start walking more and start biking more, you know, maybe ten years from now, we will go down to twenty. Like, when I was looking at Boise's limit of twelve, you know, Boise is very urban. They have a population that walks and bikes and, I think, a lot, I don't know. Thirty, thirty's fine. Just put it down. That's fair enough.
Any other thoughts?
I'll, I'll just, I'll just harp on this, but I still think approaching it from a number perspective is missing the point. I think when you look at the configurations we've got, sure, there's a couple lots like the old EMSI lot where you've got, or the courthouse lot, but most of the, most of the problems seem to be in the lots, again, like the big, where you got the big area, lots of head-to-head parking. That's where, that's where I can see the mitigation need to take place. In the residential ones, I just don't see a problem that defining a number of spaces or defining landscaping based on the number of spaces is gonna solve.
But legislating with those numbers is so much easier.
Yeah, that's kind of what I see, is you want, you want to avoid a hundred-page parking ordinance.
Well, and design review every time somebody does a parking plan.
I don't think it's, to me, it, just if you say, you know, if there's, anytime you have head-to-head parking, there needs to be some landscaping in between the two, two bays. I don't think, that, that doesn't seem difficult to me.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree to disagree.
You write it. You're the lawyer.
Okay, any other comments? All right, well, I'll make those proposed changes.
Do you, do you need us to vote on anything, or we're just, we're just having a discussion, basically, right? So, um-
Yeah, I think we-
You're coming back again.
I have that direction, so, yeah, I can, I can do it and make the, make the changes, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and thank you, Victoria, for serving, and Greg, and the other people who served on the committee, the Parking Advisory Committee. It was helpful.
Parking's actually interesting.
Yeah, yeah. We got into the details a little bit. And you see all the different dimensions coming at, all the perspectives?
Well, I thought we had some really good suggestions-
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I really liked the specifying the landscaping according to gallons instead of, you know, trying to figure out dimensions. It just makes a lot more sense. That's how you buy stuff, so. All right, so that brings us to the two thousand and, item seven, two thousand and nine Conference of Plan update, chapters two and three.
Okay. Well, we covered chapter two last time, and I think, aside from the future land use map, which I'm still working on, I got an update on that, but I did make some minor changes. I did go back and when Bill and Ryan had, we each kind of got assigned different sections to update. Some of the, I think Wendy mentioned last time, some of the dates, in some circumstances, were a couple of years old, and so those ended up being updated for the current dates. And so I think we've all got, you know, twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen numbers-
For the enrollment, yeah.
Yeah, in a lot of the categories. So, what they had done was just updated the enrollment, but just assumed that it was gonna be a new, you know, updated year and didn't do that. So I just thought that those were still the same years that they had on there. So, yeah, I've gone back and, that's the primary change, is to update the more recent years on a lot of these. Then there were a couple, I think maybe, there were a couple that didn't even have, like Moscow Charter didn't have any enrollment figures, and so I went, we went ahead and contacted them to get current enrollment. And then that was pri, you know, the primary change, we'll still have to go through, I think we'll probably work with Historic Preservation to update some of these pictures that are in the Historic Preservation section. I think that would probably be good. And looking at some of the more of these pictures in here that the consultant had taken-
Right.
I think we can probably, you know, like, page two dot sixteen, Moscow's historic buildings have been adaptively reused for decades. I think we've got a lot better examples than looking at that view from City Hall of some downtown businesses that, you know, have gone into some of the historic buildings and done a really good job. So, I think we can, we can update some of those pictures.
I have one little spotlight on section, section two point four, pretty much the first full paragraph. I guess, from a preservation standpoint, looking at downtown and also knowing, being through marriage an owner of a building downtown and knowing what happens on the second floor of some of these buildings, they really become entrepreneurial centers for little businesses. And so to say the office suites are often small and outdated, it's sort of, you know, not really fair, because in some cases, like the Chamber of Commerce and Dan Mullen's office, I can think of quite a few recent attempts to really improve the, the aesthetics and update to serve contemporary businesses in the downtown area. So I think to just kind of put that statement in there is not very productive.
What page is that again?
Well-
Two point four.
Two point four. It's the, it's a second-
That's the City Hall on it picture.
Yeah, it just says, it's, it's, the paragraph starts with business offices are located throughout the community. And it's, it's, in the downtown area, offices tend to locate in storefronts or in suites above street-level retail. These offices, suites are often small and outdated. Well, some business owners have actually done recent upgrades to those spaces, and, and some of the upstairs ones are in constant evolution, so I don't think it's a fair statement.
Okay.
It's like taking a strip development-
You have two levels in, over here, place, don't you, Greg? There's two, isn't that building, is it?
The one, the, the old McConnell Building there, or?
Well, your EMSI, or your-
Oh, yeah, that, well, it was the old newspaper.
That would be a great example of a recent upgrade to a downtown building.
So I think we should at least state the most positive way of looking at our town, because we are seeing just, I'm, I'm surprised at how lovely things, even, even, I don't know what the folks at the New Art are doing, they've been doing for a long time, but something's happening there. So there is stuff going on on Main Street that's really pretty exciting.
Well, the point is there's cycles, too, and whether it's a strip development, a strip office park, or something at Alturas, everything has a life cycle, and, you know, I would say downtown's life cycle has been ongoing for a hundred and something years, and, and some buildings are, you know, need updating and others don't, you know?
Yeah, well, if you take a look across the street from, you know, your building, the old Red Door, Nosh, you know, Colter Creek bought that, and if you look on the backside in the alley-
Right.
It pretty much gutted the whole backside. You know, they left all the facade in the front and everything, but the whole back is, is getting demoed and rebuilt.
Oh, really?
So, you know, residential above, too, so that'll be another, another building there.
Yeah. So there are things happening downtown, so I just don't want it to sound so tired in the con- So there are things happening downtown, so I just don't want it to sound so tired in the comprehensive plan. That's.
Yeah, you're right. There's a lot of, they provide a lot of opportunities for new and small businesses. There does seem to be a lot of innovation going on down there in the last few years.
These office suites are often inexpensive and conveniently located.
Well, they, you know, they foster these little businesses where people have an idea and they have cheap rent and they try to get something going. And sometimes they fail and they probably have a fifty percent failure rate, but they still, then the next wave comes in.
Somebody else comes in.
Yeah.
They don't stay empty long.
Do, does anyone else on the commission think it perhaps be appropriate for there to be a dedicated section that just talks about how these repurposed buildings are coming to fruition and? Because this is community character. And I think this action of, you know, taking something old and making it something new and useful is definitely part of the Moscow character that has taken hold in our downtown, not only with the EMSI building, but we have so many eateries, the Lodge Pole, Hungadaga, who all took these buildings.
The whole corner there was a huge transformation.
And it's gorgeous, beautiful.
Martin's.
So we put a whole lot into downtown expansion, which really hasn't happened. And some of it is even described as not happening for a long time. And yet, and yet we don't talk about what's actually happening. You're right.
Yeah.
And, and so that's, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, if you think of what has happened in the last ten years, it's astonishing.
Well, and also recently I've been in a number of small towns that have a downtown about the same era as Moscow's, but there's nothing going on.
No.
And if we can paint that contrast, that could easily be worth doing in the.
Absolutely, yeah, I don't, I don't know how, I'm just a little shocked at how delightful. Maybe every time we go to an event downtown at night and at ten o'clock, there's still people out on the street. And there are lovely shops that we see repurposed, the little glass place. Your place is pretty busy, surprisingly. I mean, they're busy on both sides of the street. It's, it's something to be pretty proud of, positive about, no doubt.
Yeah.
And I really think that those accomplishments should definitely be illustrated in the comprehensive plan, that this is what we have done so far. Because right now it's not there.
I don't think that, I mean, we, the, the building that the co-op is in has been there for, ever since before I came back to town. And it's been used, but never used as well as it is right now. I mean, right now, you know, talk about parking spots, you can't, getting a parking spot there in front of the co-op, you might as well just forget about it, in my estimation. I never tried, but people are always going in and out. So that's, that's such a energy zone.
Mm-hmm. So.
So anyway, I suppose what we're saying is that we, we, if there's a way to use language that gives that sort of positive reinforcement.
Okay, yeah, I could do that. You want it in the downtown section or you want it in?
It seems to fit there maybe, I don't know.
If it's there, you know, but.
We kind of talked about it in the commercial and industrial, we have two places where the sentence you don't like, where you pointed out.
Just put it in place, no doubt, yeah.
Is there the downtown section starting on page two one fourteen or two fifteen?
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like there's, there's a two point, two four, two point four point one downtown expansion. But it seems like we need a section that's really two point, that goes before that, that talks about what it is that's getting revitalized. And in a way, it's going through a transformation from a historically, a commercial retail district. And there's no retail down, I mean, there's a, there's a bit, but it struggles. But it's definitely an entertainment district. I mean, it.
Definitely leisure.
And, you know, it'd be great, but with online competition and, and originally, I guess the malls siphoned the sort of commercial life out of downtown. And it's pretty hard for the, there are people who are trying and, you know, and I hope they keep persisting. But definitely the, the, it's sort of transformation into a, a arts and entertainment district. It seems pretty vibrant. I mean, we have a lot of restaurants for the size of the community now.
A lot of.
When I think that there used to be like one or two choices.
They all seem to be doing pretty well.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's, yeah.
Was the art supply store still downtown when this was written, this last plan, two thousand and nine?
The, the, Ken Stationery, no, that went out like before the Beanery came in. I remember, well, I remember sitting in the Beanery waiting for them to open and they didn't have their hours posted on their door, which is one of the reasons they probably went down, you know, and, and it's, that, that is part of that. Main Street program sort of helps businesses understand how you operate to compete with shopping malls, et cetera. You know, as more of a managed system where you post your hours and you have promotional events. And, and back then, they really needed something like that. And they didn't last. But, yeah, that was, that was a long time ago. And I was sad when it went away. But, you know, and there are some small businesses trying to make it in terms of retail, but it's like HyperSpud and others, but it's.
Very niche.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it's exactly.
Castle Drell and the.
Right, right.
The art, the art, the stationary stores have really taken a major beating everywhere.
Yeah.
Even.
Even Staples. If you consider them that.
The University of.
Or not Staples, but Office Depot is what.
Used to have quite a lot of, and it's, it's gone downhill. And, and so the fact that you can get stuff from Amazon in two days just blows the system. Because I don't know, I just, my wife was shocked. I, I got a new fountain pen for my birthday. It's a gorgeous fountain pen, but it takes these cartridges. Well, you couldn't buy one in Moscow, there wasn't a chance. There probably are only five.
I went to about five stores to find blank photo albums.
And so, you know, boom, I, so I went to, two days ago, I thought, well, I'm getting down, I don't have any more cartridge click on Amazon. And I got a little box of twenty-four things coming to me, you know, twenty-four hours later. And my wife is looking at it like, what the heck is that? You know, you, you, that's something you couldn't buy. You'd probably have to drive to Seattle to find the store.
And even then, I don't know.
And so that's why Ken's closed.
Yeah.
No doubt.
Yeah, couldn't compete.
Yeah.
But at any rate, having something about the current and transformative state of, of downtown, the historic district of downtown.
What about the renewal district is, is, is the new hospital building in the renewal district or is it in?
Yeah, it's in the, yeah, it's in the district.
So it seems to me like that, along with what's going to happen with San Greia when they get their building going. We've got a couple, at least we, we're beginning to see just some little, some stuff happen. I mean, that building that the hospital built, we did a, we did a studio with Kara and PJ.
PJ.
PJ. And we, we, we spent a whole semester working on, and the hospital was really excited about. And one of the buildings that my students designed is almost a direct replica of what they just built, just boom. And I know the hospital, we invited the hospital administration to sit in on our crutch, you know, to, and, and now it's really exciting just to see that. And we didn't put it in the same block that they put it in. They, we, we thought maybe it could go in a different block, but it, but it's just one block away. So I, I think that, I don't know if there's a chance to say something about the positive, some positive things about the, our renewal districts.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about the renewal districts in another section, but I can add the, you know, that's.
Yeah, it's kind of its own segment.
Close downtown, so, yeah, I can deep up that section and talk about all the great things that are happening.
Well, because Alturas is kind of completed, right? I mean, there are a few empty lots, but the, the idea.
It was closed in twenty fifteen.
Right, so maybe in a sense, it's been either realized or to the extent it's going to be realized and so.
Well, I was just thinking too, I, I, I don't know if there's a chance for different graphics here on Mike, but I don't know if the folks, what's the name of the student housing thing on the, over there on the corner, the highway that we've.
The new one.
Identity.
Identity, right.
If it looks, I don't know whether they're waiting for better weather or whether they've gotten discouraged or what. We haven't seen any digging yet.
Yeah, they plan on going for the final PUD next meeting.
I see.
So they've just been going through construction, drawings.
I guess what I'm saying is two or three images of things, when we did this, I felt whoever was working on it along with Bill used images that stolen from various places, but we've really got some good examples. EMSI has just, you know, could be deified in the, in the document as, we gave them a.
An award, yeah.
An award for that. I mean, we.
Well, it's a pretty hefty transformation of Jackson. I mean, it really helps the street image, et cetera, and, and, right?
I guess, well, I think what we're just saying is that any place where we have a chance to, to note the positive moves of our, our, our local businesses.
And to see more of that happening, it's like.
We should jump on it.
Sure, yeah, to, that it becomes a catalyst. All right, so did you have more on chapter ten now that we sidetracked you for a while here?
No, it was just, yeah, we talked about the neighborhood conservation districts and getting rid of those. And so what we, and if you look at the, you know, amount of gray area in the city, there was a lot of it. So I've been going through and I've only got pretty much south of Highway eight here that I've completed. So I'll be working my way around and then we'll try to tackle the, you know, or Fort Russell and some of the older neighborhoods. And so probably will take me another two, three weeks in order to get that finalized and then, as I get everything changed, so. All right, chapter three. So this is the community mobility chapter. We'd gone through and kind of identified that there were some areas that needed updating, local context, alternative highway alignments, so the ring roads, corridor gateway beautification, public art, street trees, a little bit about bicycle mobility. So I, I didn't get very far on this. We've got the local contacts, talks a little, give some census information about commuting, so journeys to work. I was able to change, so looking at, you know, was the census that happened in two thousand where we had the previous numbers. So now it's between two thousand and eight, two thousand and twelve, so the American Community Surveys that happened during those years, we've increased from three percent journey to work by bicycle. Now that's at five percent journey to work. So we've, we've increased by a couple percentage points as far as the number of people that commute to work by bicycle. And then we have a little bit of information about citizen survey responses for traffic in the city. We've updated that from the previous two thousand and six numbers to the twenty fourteen citizen survey. Went down slightly. It was seventy-six percent of residents believe that traffic is not a problem or only a minor problem. Now that's gone down to about seventy-two percent in this recent twenty fourteen citizen survey. Believe that it's just not a problem or a minor problem. And then we had previously had nine percent of respondents believe traffic was a major problem or extreme problem. That's increased from nine to twelve. So probably within the error deviation there.
Probably reflects rush minute going up to rush seventy-five seconds.
Yeah. And then we'll, let's take a look at proposed alternate highway alignments. This goes through a lot of the background information of the development of the ring road concept, which are called the alternative highway alignments. And so a lot of this goes back and forth of when the concept first originated and then it goes through the Transportation Commission's work on this. As you recall, from the recent multimodal transportation plan, they had taken a look at the different quadrants. You know, this was the, pretty much the ring road alignments that we had on the two thousand and nine comp plan. And so they had taken a look at that as part of the multimodal transportation plan and analyzed each of those different quadrants. And then they came up with some key findings. And they were essentially saying that the cost benefit, I guess the cost outweighed the benefit except for the southwest quadrant. And then even, you know, these are hard to think, you know, some of these, you think about the, you know, these are professional traffic engineers, but it's hard to think about some of these conclusions as far as the addition of the ring road does not significantly improve intersection operations downtown or on parallel routes. Intersection of Third and Washington Street would continue to serve a high northbound left turn volume and operate at a level of service B during the evening peak hours. And so, you know, I think that it would do maybe quite a bit to alleviate maybe some of the heavy truck traffic turning on that intersection. But as far as saving anybody a whole lot of time for doing the alternative, you know, bypass in the southwest quadrant, it looks like all the, the reduction in, in trips would probably be minimal, is what they had concluded. So, I mean, you can, you can see that, but it's, in the same sense, it's hard to think that, you know, a southwest quadrant bypass wouldn't alleviate it to a certain extent. And then it has a price tag associated with it. So preliminary estimates would range from a hundred and ten to a hundred and forty million, including right-of-way. And so that's assuming all quadrants, all the way around the city for construction of, of the ring road. And then the last one, no new northwest, southwest roadways in place. And so this is assuming that there's no east side ring road. Future ring road would experience a ten to twenty percent reduction in demand compared to current forecast. And downtown would remain the same compared to the full ring road. Then their recommendation for action for the city was to take a look at that southwest quadrant and then maybe look at some alternatives for using existing roadways in those other quadrants. And so I think that's the work that the Transportation Commission has been doing as far as taking a look at using existing roadways to maybe serve as the bypasses in these areas. You've got Pluse River Drive and, and some of these other roadways that can be, you know, potentially expanded and utilized as, you know, a bypass. It's not a highway, it's a, you know, more of a two-lane arterial in those locations. And so I know the Transportation Commission has, has taken a look at that. I think they plan on leaving the ring road in that southwest quadrant, but maybe look at different alternatives in those other quadrants. But they have, you know, this, getting back to kind of the traffic volumes, you see some slight reduction. So this is just assuming the ring road's built all the way around the city. You see some, some reductions. So this is Third and Washington and they're really slight. It's like three to four percent. So it's alleviating three hundred left, left turn trips per day, which is pretty minor with the ring road. Corridor beautification, we need to update this to include the work that's been done. We had the council goal a number of years ago for beautification of the major highway corridors and the city entrances. And so we need to update this section to reflect the work that, at least the plan that's been done towards that. Update the intersection safety statistics. We've got a map associated with this, but these numbers are from two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. We should be able to get, you know, more of a, an average over a certain number of years instead of just one year or a year and a half to take a look at it. So we'll need to go back and gather that data from the police department and update those numbers in this table. Public art integration. So within the last year, councils adopted the public art master plan. So the arts department and community development worked on creating a master plan for. So the arts department and community development worked on creating a master plan for public art, which should be reflected within this section. And so, you know, they identified key locations throughout the city, not just seven, eight bullet points as to where those should be, and so they prioritize those and we can go through and, and highlight that the art plan was adopted and where those preferred locations are going to be. Street tree section, we recently adopted the revised street tree ordinance, so we'll just need to reflect this section. So, you know, they go through potential alternative to require developers install street trees when the property is subdivided. So, you know, they have some recommendations there, but I'll have to revise that to ultimately go with what the council ended up approving for the street tree ordinance. Bicycle mobility section, a lot of this is just updating kind of similar information that we did before, journey to work for bicycles and then some of the work that's been done as far as bike routes throughout town. So we've got the Greenway, the public works-
And the Sherrows and the-
The Sherrows and a lot of signage and so we can, you know, update this section with a lot of those things, the, the public works that's been doing as far as route finding and Sherrows and bike lanes throughout the city. We'll have to take a look at the thoroughfare plan, you know, multimodal transportation plan, had some recommendations for functional classifications and talking with Les recently, I think the transportation had worked on some things that were a little bit different than the recommendation for the multimodal plan. And so, you know, just taking a look at the thing, the classifications that changed, there were some number of areas, and this is what the multimodal would recommend. We had A Street, which was previously a collector, and so now they're proposing to have this being arterial. This was the weird, you know, the odd thing is why we'd have this one section through the university property behind the mall that hadn't been built yet that would still be designated as a collector. And so I think that talking with Les, that didn't make sense to him either, so I think that, you know, they were going to look at recommending that they make this an arterial all the way across to State Line. Then we had Palouse River Drive, this was formerly an arterial and it's been downgraded to a collector. Taking a look at kind of current traffic volumes and anticipated traffic volumes, I think they, there was about double going eastbound on Palouse River Drive as opposed to going westbound, so that, that's a change that's happened between the thoroughfare and the, and the multimodal recommendation. Joseph Street increased from a collector to an arterial in the, in the multimodal, so that, that was a change. And then Third Street ended up increasing from a collector to an arterial as well. So in talking with Les, it sounds like, you know, these are of course recommended functional classifications. I think the last adopted functional classifications were a number of years old, so I think Transportation Commission and Joel can update us next time, but I think they have been working on kind of a revised functional classification system for all of our roads in town. And I think that he'll, Les will end up providing a recommendation as well as Transportation Commission as to, you know, the classifications that we should end up adopting in the comp We have our transit routes for smart transit, I think we had looked at this before, we don't have this Wheatland commuter from Pullman to Moscow anymore, so that needs to be removed. We've got a more updated route within the multimodal plan that are essentially the same, you know, the, the routes are a little bit different. They've got this, I think maybe weekend route that runs up by Rosar's area, that I think it just, there's limited services within that area, so we can take what they have here and pretty easily update what we have in the comp plan. And then that table that we had looked at before, the stars are reflected for a number of accidents within those intersections in the table. So based upon what we get out of the outcome for the table, we can revise the increase, you know, the star size or decrease it or maybe add other intersections that could have a number of accidents in them. So we'll go through and update that. That's pretty much all the changes in, in chapter three. I did print, like with the other chapters, everybody a copy of the chapter for your own review so you can go home and read through it, take a look at it. I hope to have a legislative copy next time for everybody to take a look at. And then I don't know what Les' schedule is and I don't know if Transportation, I would assume is probably going to give us a recommendation as to roadway classifications and so I don't know if we'll have that for next time, but I envision this chapter will probably take us, you know, at least maybe two, three meetings to get through so we can talk about it and, and look at the changes. The remainder of the chapters should be pretty easy, we've got a Parks and Rec chapter that recently adopted a Parks and Rec master plan, so I think we already have a whole, a lot of that information. And then chapter six is economic development and I think we've already, Bill's already started working on maybe updating some of that. So I think we'll probably spend the most amount of time on the community mobility chapter and then move on and it should be fairly easy after that. But I'll continue to work on the future land use map and hopefully get that completed here in the next two, three weeks and then we can just take it, take it slowly on the mobility chapter and go through it and start reading through and seeing your own comments and we can come back and talk about them next time.
Great.
So, quick question. So is there anywhere that there's like a write-up on what the city has accomplished that's in the old comp plan? I mean, when we update these?
There should be. I mean, yeah, it, you know, it provides, a lot of these are our recommendations as to what we should be doing. And if we've already done it, you know, like in the implementation actions, we're just, we've just been striking those off the list because we've accomplished it. But I, I think it should, yeah, also highlight, you know, all the revised sections that where we've done things that have accomplished that goal to reflect that and not just eliminate the summary of the sections, but to go back and, and, you know, revise those to include the things that we've accomplished and then there's, maybe there's other things that, you know, spawn off of that that we can work on for future, you know, improvement, so.
Because, yeah, that was kind of where I was thinking was, you know, there's a, a page or two at the beginning of each chapter about, you know, these are the things from the last comp plan that the city's accomplished. Just a, just a little brag sheet kind of thing.
Yeah. We could look, we could look at that.
That's what we were talking about in, about downtown as well. So, you know, how that should be formed, I haven't seen that done, but whether that's a separate little document or at the back or at the front or someplace, and as sort of an executive summary of-
Accomplishments.
How the plan has either worked or not worked.
Well, for example, Altura's too, I mean, it's kind of gone through its cycle and, yeah, how do you address that to show that most of the goals were realized and it's a completed project? I mean, you, you said it closed in 2015 in there and maybe there's a way to say that goal's been achieved.
Yeah.
Something like that, is that another closeout on it?
Okay.
So, yeah. Okay. Great. And then our, so we're supposed to read this and we'll start discussing it next time and then the use table ordinance, are you going to do that today?
I am, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
So I talked to legal department and they're still at least a couple of weeks out just because there's, you know, chapters one through four, there's so many changes that they're still going through and making sure all the, there's a lot of references to other portions and that are getting moved and so they're still going through and making sure that those are all correct. So I'm hoping to have an ordinance here within the next couple of meetings, but I think we talked about last time about maybe taking a look at different formats for tables. This is what we, you know, have now. I had gone through and just given, you know, just looked at some other municipalities throughout the country as to their land use tables and how they organize them. This is from Nashville actually, they've got the colors of the rainbow for the, the different categories of zones up here. So it's, you know, it's, it's really set up the way we do, they just have the different, you know, columns going down in order to highlight the different types of zoning districts. You know, one thing that, looking through these that I noticed was a lot of them have the grouping of uses. So you'll see over here, like, we obviously have the residential uses and we list all of our residential uses, but the majority of the commercial uses and institutional uses they'll group. So they'll have institutional uses and then it'll be like, you know, daycare facility, school, monastery or convent, religious, religious institution. So they'll, they'll group kind of all those categories and whereas we had just listed them. So, you know, with non-residential uses, we just list them alphabetically as to all the uses that are listed in the zone. So that may be something to think about, you know, I think that-
I like it. I think it's a good way and I, I think the color idea is good, we could not be-
Tone it down?
Yeah. I think subtlety would be fantastic.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's-
But not that.
Kind of out of the, out of the normal. So this is Boise's. There's, I think they probably tried to format this knowing that a large number of copies are probably going to be black and white, so that's why they have the kind of grayscale with black and white on there. But they do the same thing, so they've got, you know, kind of these major categories and they have all the uses listed under each one. And I think it, you know, taking a look at that and thinking about it, it may, I think it makes a lot of sense to, to do it that way and instead of having the giant list and to group them. So I agree, might look at going back and trying to categorize those and, and list all the uses. Seattle is pretty bare bones. They had, you know, it was pretty simple, but they once again kind of list, you know, grouped, grouped all the uses under, under those different categories. This is from Portland and they're about as simple as they get, not even any type of shading, just straight table is what they have.
It's pretty shocking to have the two big cities.
You know, I was-
I, I don't know what's, makes my head sweat.
I was expecting to be blown away and have some good ideas, but it didn't happen, so. And then Spokane, similar, just pretty, pretty bare bones as far as their table. I think this was a municipality down in Utah, but they have, you know, similar, so they have it categorized, public civic uses and they list everything and then they go on down from there. So taking a look at ours, I had played around with a little bit, you know, we don't have any of the shading, you know, typically you have maybe some shading every alternate row and so I had to take, you know, take a look at what that would look like and I think that improves it. Ended up trying the column shading and I didn't, you know, looking at that one, I don't know that that worked out as well as the row.
Horizontal.
Yeah, I think the horizontal works out better. So I went back to the horizontal and then highlighted-
Because you're going to be-
Some of these areas, so it kind of divided, you know, I thought it'd be a good division between the residential use, residential zones and then the commercial zones. So I ended up, you know, putting a dividing line there and then this is kind of what I ended up with. So I think, I don't think we had any outlining of the different cells, so I went and made sure these were all outlined and more of a grayish that fit in with the background and put the double line going up on these and I think it ended up, so this is an example of what we have now to what, what would be kind of the proposed. So I think it, you know, cleaned it up a little bit and then I think that, you know, this line in particular helps you out in order to have a point of reference in the middle of the cell in order to be able to navigate it. So I think if we go back and, and group all the similar uses and different categories, I think it'll make it pretty nice. So I, you know, looking at all the other ones, I think this would probably be one of the best ones that-
Portland and Seattle will be looking at us?
I know, they'll be copying ours.
At the next AKA annual conference, we can get a reward for-
Tables, tables for that.
Yeah. For table format.
So that's all I have new for the use table.
That's fantastic.
That's great.
Well done.
Thinking about that and then the categories.
Good.
So hopefully next time I'll, we can look at some categories and go from there.
Sounds good. So the last item on the agenda is just shared readings and it's not sharing any readings this week, but wondering what topics people are interested in, if anybody has any to propose and if so, maybe being willing to doing, doing a little bit of a search along those lines and I'll cer, and Mike and I will certainly also look and, but what, what topics do you, interest you in terms of?
I would be interested in talking about things like, I guess, non-vehicular transportation. When we talk about biking and walking, it comes up from time to time and I was, I was noticing as I've been walking more that now that the snow's gone, there's just a whole lot of, Moscow's really inconsistent about how it deals with things like sidewalks and sidewalk maintenance and bike lanes and all that kind of stuff.
If you've been, we've had moments in time before your time, we had a big LID where people did, and it's about time to do it again. I, I think, gosh, soon after we came to town, early eighties, we, there was an effort to go around and I'm just noticing the same thing you're noticing. I've, I've worked on my sidewalks because I, I know I've got my snow blower and I know that when there's a, you know, it jerks me around and messes up my snow blower, but I notice if I go down the block, in our particular block on Hayes, it's, it's a serious disarray. And so I, I hate to be the guy to run around and mention to my neighbors, guys, you know, I, because every now and then I get excited and let, take my snow blower all the way down the fifth, do the whole thing and-
That enthusiasm in our neighborhood has kind of gradually decreased here. Remember when there were five men out all using their snow blowers on Z Street? It's just kind of diminishing with all the opportunities.
Early retirement, you get excited, later retirement, I think you start to like that.
Well, it's how many times in a winter do you want? Here we go again.
But you're right, I, I think we could easily look at our, our sidewalks among, among other things. I, I don't know that, you know, in a tiny town like us, walking and bike riding's really the only things that we've got to, because I think our bus, little bus system is, I'm, I'm still in shock that we couldn't even get it. So obviously that's some federal money that has helped us.
A lot of people use it who don't have, you drive your car when you really have to go somewhere and people who can't drive use it. My son uses it all the time.
No, no, I know they use it, but I'm just saying it's a, it's a shocking thing to even have it in such a small town, so it's a blessing.
But, you know, McCall and Cascade and then there's like Three Town, remember that? Or maybe you, no, you weren't part of that project, but they have a bus system. I mean, you know, talking about little towns that have a bus system, it's, it's pretty amazing.
Well, the resort towns, you can understand it, I don't know.
It's getting the employees to work, I guess, you know, basically, because they can't live in McCall or, or wherever. Tamara used it when it was open. But, yeah, it's, it's, so in terms of, so looking at non-vehicular transportation just in terms of how you plan to accommodate it, is that what you're thinking in terms of the question?
Plan to accommodate it, maintain it.
Okay.
Yeah, just all that kind of, it, it, it doesn't seem, and I know that, you know, now there's more, but it just seems that there has not always been a plan and the plan hasn't always been consistent and not always carried out.
I think, I think that's the deal, there's just so many legacy kind of areas where, you know, for some decades, there was no requirement for sidewalks and-
Originally there, people decided they needed them and so the historic neighborhoods all had them and then they started to fade out when we got more car oriented and, and you know, the biggest tragedy that we finally fixed, I think, is, was- you know, the biggest tragedy that we finally fixed, I think, was D Street, because there's so many schools along D Street. And you watch kids coming across from behind Rosa, you know, the other side of town who were going to the junior high, and they're walking on nothing on D Street, and in the wintertime, it's really dangerous. But now at least we've got a sidewalk on all the way up, I think, but, yeah, so-
And some of the, I know we did some readings a while ago that included things on, you know, certain demographics are using fewer and fewer cars.
Right.
And I don't think we've got a sufficient plan for that, other than, well, it'd be nice if it happened, but how do we plan for-
Well, is it the, what's the name of that development, Identity? Identity, yeah, yeah, because they're, they're pushing that whole argument that the millennials aren't using cars. And so is that really true in Moscow? Is that really true in general in the Northwest? Is that really true nationwide? You know, what, how far does that really, how, how does that really apply? Because I think we're going to get hit more and more with those requests from developers who are coming in from places where they really aren't using cars because they can't afford to, you know?
How do we make that attractive and accommodate?
Right. Because it's the student population, you know, and, yeah, more than anything, that is going to reflect that, that change in lifestyle trend.
Me and my wife have had one car our entire time in Moscow for school, and like, it's just what you said about the cost. I think, I was reading somewhere like 15 years ago, it was like one tenth of your salary went towards your car, purchase, maintenance, your insurance, everything. But now they say it's like one-fifth is, just goes towards your vehicle. So I think we'll definitely see some sort of change.
And I think we're, I use A Street a lot. I try and stay off the highway, and so I see a lot, the students all living up there all tend to walk. And so I think we tie our, both in terms of walking and bike riding, we really ought to figure out how to be more like the students and less like ourselves in a way. There is a reason why the students, number one, there's no parking on campus. If you had a car, you can't find a place anyway, so they have a reason to walk, and so we should probably really try to join them. I'm not as, I'm not a, Wendy walks a lot, I don't, I have a tendency to-
I drove tonight though because of the weather. I just said, I'm not doing it tonight.
Again, the paths, the bike paths are what I use, the minute the weather gets good, I really love that, because I, I use those, I just found it really delightful that from my part over on this side of town that I can go to the mall without driving on a major street. And that's really, so that pathway is really-
Well, that, yeah, because I know from my house to campus, from door to door, 26 minutes because of the grid, no matter which street or combo we took, and that's walking moderately fast. Bicycle 10 minutes, but I am too scared to go through downtown, and I used to be the wuss who would ride on the sidewalks, and now they don't let you do that, so then, and then driving, you know, it's probably 15. So actually bicycling, it, not this time of year, but, you know, when it's, when it's, when you can bicycle, is probably the fastest way to get around, but it's just, I didn't feel safe, you know, there, people-
Take your life in your hands.
Yeah, it just, so I walked and not, and then you look at the number of accidents at those intersections that you have to cross, and some of them involve pedestrians, you know, who I, yeah. But anyway, so we'll, we'll explore that, and anybody who wants to try to ferret out articles in addition, you know, feel free and we'll, because we'll, I'll look for some myself, you know, and we'll see. Because maintenance is an issue too. When you were talking about A Street, I know, you know, during all our storms in early January and late December, when I was trying to get up to a friend on C Street off of A on West C and had to park down at Superior, the sidewalks had not been plowed anywhere. I mean, you're up to like two feet of snow, and it's, so it is a problem. I mean, for pedestrians or people who, if we're going to go to a less automobile-oriented community, or at least having alternatives, that's, that's part of the problem, you know, like you're suggesting, is how do you, how do you keep those open? So, anyway, okay.
Can I throw out one quick thing too? And this is just, I don't want to get into it deeply, but just as an idea, because I don't even know if this kind of information exists out there somewhere, but the thing that we're talking about a little bit, about the parking lot standards, that it is so easy, you know, it's much easier to do it in terms of 50 stalls, you know, 30 stalls, things like that. I wonder if there's any research being done on how you write ordinances with enough flexibility, so like you were talking about different configurations of the parking lots, that-
Seems like you'd be, you'd write based on standards rather than, is that the word I mean, rather than being prescriptive, you'd be something else.
Some will do it off a percentage, so.
Yeah, but I mean, it's still the sort, I mean, it's like the flexibility of being able to say, well, look, this thing is way different, and how do you write that up without it being the 175?
Well, it's funny that you said that, because before this meeting, after the parking lot meeting the other day, I was reviewing the APA and looking for articles about parking lot standards, and some of them do go to percentage, like you have to have 10%, if you, 10% of the lot minimum has to be landscaped. How you do it is up to you, you know? I don't know if that's good or bad, but that's-
Well, when we looked at the research, you know, some of them did that, some of them didn't.
Yeah.
And it was just more of ease of use, I think is what we ended up going, just that one per ratio.
Right, and so I started figuring out what's 10%, you know, what's-
You know, instead of me having to calculate it every time for everybody that's in there, you know, having the public be able to easily interpret what the requirements are, is why we ended up with the kind of one per X, you know, ratio.
But, but performance-based rather than specified, I think that's the difference in those two strategies, what you're talking about, something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's close to it, anyway.
So if you can perform your parking lot configuration, so you essentially have two parking lots instead of one giant one with a separation, then maybe that, you know, that would be one of those lines. But, anyway, I guess, or anybody want, well, I guess we're adjourned, yeah, unless there's anything else. Thank you.